702 computer cell and we call this regular meeting to order. Allison.
Here.
Here. Here. Okay, uh next everyone please stand for a moment of silence followed by the closing. Ladies and gentlemen.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It's a beautiful house tonight, isn't it?
Okay, uh next on the agenda is recognition of public comments. When so directed, they can stand at the podium, give their name and begin your statements and you'll have about five minutes to do that. First speaker is Jennifer McHill.
Hello. My name is Jennifer McHill and I have a daughter who is in kindergarten at Science School. I really hate public speaking, so bear with me as I stick to my notes. I was shocked to find out there's a possibility of extending the elementary school day even further. I'm here to address why I disagree with extending that so much and why I don't believe it will be beneficial especially for the younger kids. I also strongly believe it's unfair to our district's elementary school teachers. I'm gonna try to address both of these separately as well as I can. A lot of these decisions seem based upon data and metrics, so I decided to provide some simple numbers myself. Forty-five minutes times one hundred seventy-four school days equals seven thousand eight hundred thirty minutes or one hundred thirty and a half hours, uh, school year. That's one hundred thirty and a half hours less that parents will get to see their children who's already constantly changing faces. One hundred thirty and a half hours less that kids will get to play at home and be kids when childhood is already so fleeting. And one hundred thirty hours less for teachers to have time to plan lessons, grade answer parent emails, or be with their own families. I don't think getting into school earlier and adding forty-five minutes to a young child's day is beneficial. The statement of having our district's awesome students spending more time with our district's awesome teachers sounds great, of course, but it's a very much some oversimplification of a multilayered issue involving both our children and our teachers, neither of whom were asked their opinion on this or the parents. Um, one issue I'd really like to point to would be their mental health. Uh, very few of us in this room, maybe none, know what it's like to be a young child or a teacher the last few years during this pandemic. Um, they have to be totally burnt out. Is the district offering more mental health resources or are we just adding more to your workload? My daughter comes home exhausted from school already as it is. She is five years old. When I was five, I went to half-day kindergarten. Um, when my cousin was five, she had full-day kindergarten, but she had nap times in addition to recess. My child is five and has a full day, no nap time, but she has taken standardized tests, almost dozens of masks, and has participated in several active shooter drills. And now we've gotten to say forty-five minutes more. I don't think even more mental load is what these kids need. And for what it's worth, I can understand starting the day fifteen minutes earlier in order to help compensate for the time the teachers are serving the breakfast. But forty-five minutes more in classroom time, I don't think will improve the grades of our students or the morale of our teachers. However, if you do insist on the addition of forty-five minutes, then at least I would suggest looking toward the model Rover has with their elementary schools who go the length of time you're suggesting, but who take two thirty-minute recesses daily. There are many research articles included too by Stanford and the CDC on the benefits of recess that I'd be happy to email to anyone interested. But a few of the points I'd really like to highlight about the benefits of recess are the social and emotional benefits, which are improved ability to negotiate and share, better social interactions, increased school connectedness, and improved school climate. I think all of these are huge social factors that I can only even imagine have been missing or lacking for most of our students the past few years. Not to mention the direct academic improvements from recess, including better behavior in classrooms, improved memory and attention, and better attendance. That's the number of one hundred thirty and a half hours. I'm gonna go out on a limb and assume the teachers will not be compensated extra for one hundred thirty and a half hours of their lives. This is a profession that has got to be one of the few where so much labor is, uh, constantly expected to go unpaid. These last few years, our teachers have had to go with the rapidly changing methods in which they were even able to teach. They turned their homes into virtual quasi-classrooms. They found ways to try and keep children engaged even through a computer screen and now back in person. They've been tasked with, uh, not only the challenge of teaching during a still-present pandemic, but we've got a breakfast duty and for a while mask monitoring duties. And now we're demanding even more of a labor unpaid. There has already been a mass exodus of teachers nationwide the last few years. Those that remain are resilient and passionate. They're clearly in this profession out of a love for the children and the shaping of young minds. Why would we want to punish those that remained with even more stress? I'm sure if this passes, we'll be losing even more wonderful teachers. Surely some of our teachers commute here from other areas. An additional forty-five minutes can equate to a huge life change, especially to commuters. Many of our teachers have families. Will the district be finding ways to help cover the costs many of these teachers will now have to use for childcare? They wouldn't need to otherwise without a major schedule shift like this. I know the theme here is supposed to be for the children, but what about the children of these teachers? Teaching is always such a thankless and underpaid, underappreciated profession. I ask each member here to really think about whether they can feel good about creating even more stress and hurdles for those in this profession. I personally think the best gift we could give to our children in this district is the gift of teachers who feel appreciated and valued and heard by their district and their school board. I don't think asking them for even more after they've already given so much is a way to go about retaining our best teachers and showing them the appreciation that they deserve. I thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next speaker is, um, Weston Oxley.
Walked up there, I thought there were two Weston Oxleys. Um, so, uh, I, we have, we have five in the district, four, um, in high school right now. Um, the, the focus of Mike is sort of just the, the lateness of the day that you're leaning at. I understand you guys have multiple problems you're trying to solve creatively and how to get that. You know, our kids having been involved in extracurricular stuff, um, so much and thinking of what that's already done to them, I mean, the number of times my wife and I are spending, you know, helping them with homework, you know, late into the evening. Um, and we're, we're blessed, we've got good education, we can help our kids through that, but they've been on sports teams where we've watched some of these kids who, who aren't, you know, don't have the academic support that our kids got. And they got, you know, quarantined for COVID this last year and they missed a number of classes. And then when they were finally out of that, they missed a number of classes, they're academically struggling, and guess what? They were ineligible. And, you know, the number of games where they had to leave school or early. And okay, at this point, they would've missed a portion of a block. Now with the schedule, they'd be missing multiple classes and they're gonna become ineligible. Um, not to mention, you know, if that, those things continue happening, will kids shy more away from extracurricular? Every stat I've ever read that the more they're likely they're involved in extracurricular, the more likely we're able to retain them in school, um, keep them connected. I know that's always a big issue here, you know, retention and getting people to graduate and stay involved and all those type of things. So as I, uh, again, I know there's trade-offs, advantages, disadvantages within the decision you make, but man, uh, just from this one angle, it's pretty mounting. I know other people are addressing other aspects, but we kind of got a front row seat to, to watch a number of the, that happened with, again, largely the kids that our, our kids were connected with, but, um, as a little bit of a heartbreaker as you start to look ahead and go, what that could happen to. I mean, we've primarily seen it in sports and bands, but other extracurricular issues and, um, I just, I would hate to see us make structural changes that are discouraging those things. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Jenny Robinson.
So my name is Jenny Robinson. I'm a GHS math teacher and a parent to three young first students in the district. I'm here more probably as a parent than a teacher tonight, but I am here on both ends. I'm here to speak on behalf of a large group of concerned parents and students and teachers in regards to the new proposed bell schedules. Um, I have contacted just myself in the past week over sixty-five people, um, in some way, shape, or form, including parents, teachers of, and of all different ranges, um, and a few community members who happen to employ our students in the community. Um, I did have a few non-responses, but I had fifty-two responses back out of the sixty-five people. And, um, every single one of those fifty-two were a pretty strong, um, disagreement of the new schedule for many, many reasons. Uh, this is a very, very big change, um, a huge change to the schedule for the seven through twelve buildings at least. A year when we already have many, many numerous changes happening. We are already changing buildings, we are changing schedules, and for many departments, we are changing fall curriculums to allow from the, to the new seventh period schedule. Um, we have discussed many of the pros and cons that have been discussed before that we didn't, we were aware of. It seems like the list of pros are some possibilities that definitely could happen. Um, the list of cons are definite consequences that are going to happen. There's no doubt about it. Um, we just would like to know that, we would like to see that there would be some more input. Um, every parent that I contacted had no clue about any of this happening. Some teachers did because they had read previous information before. Um, I would just like to raise some of the concerns that were the major ones brought up at this. Obviously, the last of, lack of, lack, loss of class time, sorry. Um, not only on the student-athlete side, but also just on the teacher's side who were fortunate that our teachers are coaches as well and they do all that stuff. The loss of class time there and trying to find subs is much more time happening. Um, pushing back just everything in that amount of time, the three fifty end start to a day is gonna be just pushing everything back. It just seems like it's just, the kids really aren't gonna get more sleep. It's just gonna be a shifted sleep possibly. Um, they're gonna stay up even later because they're gonna get practice even later, they're gonna get home even later, up homework later, to bed later. Um, I've talked to some students and parents who are very concerned because their student has a job after school and this job would be a very hard thing to keep pushing that day back. We have students who bring their work uniforms to school and are able to get to school by three o'clock and take a good four or five hour shift and then still get home, still do homework, and still able to go on with their night. Um, this would possibly be a lot harder to do. Uh, another example is kids who are able to be in multiple activities. So as Mr. Oxley said, and I have a daughter that is this way too, able to be in soccer, volleyball, swim, football, all of those fall sports, and be able to be in marching band, for example. We're very fortunate that our marching band directors are gracious to have evening practices so that these kids can participate in multiple things. Um, they're out at practice at five-thirty. My kid hops out of the pool, eats a root oil bar, walks across the field and goes to band from six to nine, and then gets home in time to push out as much homework as she can before bed. Um, I worry that with this pushback of this, that's probably not even an option, honestly. If she gets out of practice at six-thirty, she's gonna have to make a choice. There's no way that band can practice till ten or ten-thirty at night and still work that way. So I worry that those kids are gonna have to make hard decisions and choices. Um, we have many unknowns with the change from the four blocks to the seventh period day. Our high school teachers are worked tremendous amounts of hours to create new curriculums to make this happen and making the most of this, but we just have many unknowns about it. We're really worried about changes too much in one year. We just don't know what workload is gonna be and things like that for the students. Um, I've also heard about a lot of childcare concerns from parents. Um, if this happens to me, my older children are the ones that help with my younger children after school. They pick him up for me, they get him off the bus, whatever, until somebody else can get home. I've heard that concern from multiple parents, that it's the older siblings that help with the younger siblings, and if we have this whole shift of schedules, that would no longer be possible. Um, I've heard concerns from younger parents, younger children's parents saying that they don't like the idea of their children having to be in after-school care for that much longer of a period of time. Um, the, I know one of the pros of this was possibly that, you know, this could help with tardies and absences and things, and that could happen. Um, that's not something that might not, but it's just a possibility. We're hoping and praying for the best in that. And honestly, as seeing, you know, how tardies and absences happen in high school, I don't see that pushing an hour back is going to change that. I think if you ask those teachers and even, um, why are absences and tardies happening, you can see that as well. Um, coaches, club sponsors, drama, all of these things that happen after school, some teachers and coaches and stuff have said we would be forced to possibly move things to the morning, and that kind of defeats the purpose then. If the kids are gonna have to still get to school at seven o'clock to be able to have a practice or have a weightlifting or something, then did, what did we really do with that? Um, I know we don't want to always focus on student-athletes. I know that's tended to be a history kind of thing that like, we don't want to focus on that necessarily solely, but we crunched some numbers and this is affecting three hundred some student-athletes in our building that between, we, uh, went through and added up the fall, not very many winter, but a few winter sports, and spring especially, lots of spring sports, um, where students have to get out early and it would be affecting a very large amount of students. Um, we would have, with the new schedule, we would have students who would possibly have to get out early even for a home event. Um, we have things that need to start on time because of weather and whatever in the spring and fall, and we wouldn't even, we, they'd have to get out early even on a home day. And then, um, another comment that came up was someone talked about that scheduling of things, which I guess this is kind of a different point because you can still have this with the elementary kids, but this parent was concerned, her daughter has an appointment every three weeks in Peoria, standing appointment, the doctor will take nothing less than late than four o'clock. So she said, now I'm pulling my kid out later to try to even get full appointments. So I just wanted to throw that in because she was very concerned about that. So, I think that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, uh, next up on the agenda is presentations to the board. Uh, I'm gonna adjust this a little bit and start with the recommendation, recognition of state medalists. So Mr. Matthews, do you mind? Hey, do you want a minute? Did you recognize?
If I could have Coach Noonan, Coach Leibach, and Coach Sharp come up. Um, they're each gonna get the opportunity to introduce you to some exceptional athletes that participated at the state level and brought home a medal. So we'll have Coach Noonan go first and then, uh, we'll have Coach Leibach and Coach Sharp finish up. We'll have the athletes come up, uh, after that. Don't go around and be able to shake hands, and then we'll meet out in the hallways for a picture. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. All right, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Jason Runbaum. Jason is a junior, come on up, Jason, so the eyes are on you a little more. Uh, Jason is a, a junior for the golf team. He's been a varsity player since he was a freshman. Uh, he had a outstanding junior season where he was top three in every, every dual, triangular, and squad that we played in. Uh, and in the big matches, he brought home multiple medals. He, uh, finished off the, the terrific season with a really outstanding postseason run. That's why we're here. He got, uh, second, solo second at the Western Big Six Conference. He got seventh at, at the regional match. He got third at sectionals. And then, uh, at the two-day state tournament, he finished up with seventh place and he had, I think, the second-best score of the day on day two. Yeah, I mean, he, he was just on fire on day two. It was, it was a lot of fun watching him play. And then to top it all off, at the end of the year, the coaches all got together and voted Jason the Western Big Six best player of the year, so it was an outstanding.
All right, I'm introducing to you sophomore Gates Ship and sophomore Rocky Almendares. These guys are wrestlers. Um, first of all, thanks to the school board and to our administrations for their support of, uh, of wrestling. We are grateful for the opportunities that we have every winter, uh, to participate in this sport that we love. I'll just say it's really cool to see young people, um, commit to long-term goals and then show the perseverance to go after them on a daily basis. And when those long-term goals are achieved, like these guys have achieved, um, it's cause for celebration for sure. So thank you for having us. Um, we are missing one of our other wrestling state qualifiers this evening. Jeremiah Morris is a senior. Um, he put together one of the great seasons in, in Galesford wrestling history. He had a record of thirty-nine and six. He was a conference champion, he was a regional champion, and he was a state qualifier to finish out his wrestling career, which was a, an awesome cap. And unfortunately, he works on Monday evenings, but I'd just like to give, in wrestling, we give one big clap for the recognition. So if we could give one big clap for Jeremiah, I'd appreciate it. One, two, three. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna talk about these guys kind of as a duo because they are tangled together in the wrestling room every day after school, um, as drill partners. They went to the state tournament in Champaign back in late February, and the state tournament had lots of emotional ups and downs. There were advancements through the winner's bracket, which put us on high. There were losses, which kind of had us reeling and recovering. But we arrived at Saturday morning, um, at the State Farm Center in Champaign in what they call the blood round. And in the blood round, the loser is done for the season and the winner makes the state tournament. And these guys won their blood round matches within ten minutes of one another. It was an absolute season highlight. It was the kind of rush that is very unique to sports. And it was a really celebratory move as they climbed from the, the competition floor back up to their parents and families and teammates to celebrate with them. So medals are hard to come by. These are only the thirteenth and fourteenth wrestling medals in Galesford wrestling history. I'm really excited to take two sophomores and roll into gyms next year with defending medalists in our lineup. And, uh, I'm really proud of the way that these guys represent not only their school but also their town. They do a great job, so thanks for having me.
Hi, I just want to let you know that I'm, uh, gleaming with pride because I get the honor of, in my opinion, talking about the greatest high school bowler, in my opinion, in Galesford history, Chloe Day.
Congratulations, dear. No, she dethroned me.
That's why I put the one. It is, it is a great honor. It has been a tremendous four years. I feel like a parent losing a child going off to college. Last year, we thought we were going to state. We actually qualified to get to go to state last year, but with COVID, they canceled the bowling tournament at state, so we set our goals for this year. And we knew this, being the senior year, that was a big goal. We needed, we needed to get everybody, what kind of bowler we had. And I would like you to know that every bowling record at Galesford High School is now owned by Chloe Day. I'll run down some of those. I'm not gonna give the number because I didn't bring my glasses and you know where I am. But she has high-three game, high-six game. She has the, um, record for the highest pin count in a season. She has the highest pin count in extended season. She has won so many medals in tournaments in first place in those that I don't think we have time to list all of those. I truly do believe in that. We've had the opportunity and the four years that Chloe has been with us to win the hometown heroes twice, which I'm also very proud of that, she had Anden and that, that we're very proud of. Chloe has always been a person who sets, uh, goals and she goes after those goals. And she's one of those people that if it's so phenomenal, she accomplishes every single one of them. So she knew every record that was there. We talked about the response as her freshman year. Look out. And so as the years went, went by, each one of those records were getting broken. And then finally, the last year, she started breaking her own records. And her final goal this year was to get in the top ten in the state, uh, finals. And along that journey, we, uh, had quite accomplishments along the way. We went through regionals and we were lucky enough to have two of our bowlers, uh, receiving all-conference, with Chloe being the number-one, uh, bowler at the regional. And since we went on from there with sectionals, the two bowlers, Ellie Chin was our other bowler, she was a, she's a junior. And Ellie, uh, missed out by thirty pins by making it on the state. And those of you who know much about bowling, that's just a couple of spares. So she came very close to the winner, Chloe. And so then we moved on to sectionals, and at sectionals, I can't remember how many bowlers, we're talking in the hundreds, we're talking a lot of bowlers at these meetings. And the top bowler at sectional, not only regional, but at sectional, was Chloe Day, first place. Makes you feel good. I do, just makes you feel so good and so proud and happy for these kids and their accomplishments. So then we went on to state. And our goal was focused on the top ten. It's all she'd won it. That was the last record. The record for Galesford High School highest advancement at the state tournament was eleventh, so she won it in the top ten. And so on the first day, it's a two-day tournament in Rockford, and I believe there's between four and five hundred bowlers, something like that, five hundred bowlers. We're talking about a huge tournament. And this is not a tournament where they separate out the class, uh, as far as well how big your school is. It's every school. It doesn't make a difference how large your school is. Everybody competes at the same tournament. Uh, at the end of Friday, we were in twenty-ninth place. And we were a little bit worried. I was anywhere. Wait, I had confidence, but I was still worrying a little bit. And she knew she could do it. I could tell the look on her face that she knew she was doing everything she could on that final day on that Saturday. And by the end of the tournament on Saturday, she had gone from twenty-ninth place and finished out of five hundred bowlers, she finished seventh place. The last thing I'd like, because I always do this at our banquets and stuff, because I think it's a huge thing that people realize that. Chloe also received another honor this year, and that was all-conference academics. So that was also a huge thing. Here, I would like to have Chloe speak for a few minutes.
Hi, um, I just wanted to speak directly to the board about something. Um, I am extremely grateful that this program has kept going through the many years where it might have been cut. And I'm extremely grateful that it kept going. And I know that I was talking about being cut before I even got to my school. And I cannot imagine where I would be right now in my career if I didn't have that. I'm currently signed to the number-two ranked women's college bowling team in the whole country, and I do not think I would be able to get that far without your support of the bowling team. So I hope that you continue to support the team coming, the coming years. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up in our presentations is Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I won't touch the microphone, uh, like Mr. Matthews did last, last month. It's standing again, so, but that goes to the unsung hero back there, Mr. Mike Cooper. He doesn't get a lot of respect in regards, often times, I think, so. He's gonna kill me for that, but. So I'm here to talk about Churchill Junior High School. Uh, this is my first year as principal at Churchill Junior High School. Um, I'm proud, uh, of some of the things that we've accomplished thus far. I'm also, uh, uh, just really looking forward to continuing that work a, as we progress into the years to come. So, uh, without further ado, uh, we have three goals, uh, to support the board's goals that they've laid out for this, this year.
So without further ado, uh, we have three goals to support the board's goals that they've laid out for this, this year. Um, our first goal takes a look at the number of students that are above grade level in mathematics. We have a pretty lofty goal to raise that from 11% overall meanier exceeding to 31%. We're going to use the I R, the I-Ready diagnostic to progress and monitor that, which we have been doing. And I'll have some results for you in a moment. Our second goal, uh, real somewhat to the first goal except with reading. Uh, we're looking at jumping from 48% of students where overall meanier exceeding to 68%. Uh, using the Scantron diagnostic to progress monitor that. And then our third goal has to do with attendance. Um, and certainly we have a pretty lofty goal. The S I P team at Churchill decided on 93% because that was a, a standard that was before, kind of pre-pandemic at COVID. Pretty lofty. Uh, at the current midterm rate, we were at 88%, so we're certainly falling short of that. I don't think we took into account that there was still some illness and sickness that would be going on, uh, you know, even as we crawled out of the pandemic. So we're doing pretty well. Um, I know there's far worse rates than that, but certainly we can have room to improve there. So looking at our first goal that dealt with mathematics, um, I, I'll give you some background there. Currently, uh, we have, like I said, 11% of students that are meeting or at grade level benchmarks. And another 30% that are on the bubble. Um, so those kids that could be either one grade level below or on grade level. So we're really trying to target those kids and get multiple kids at all grade level bands to move up. I'll show you those bands in a moment. Uh, we're doing that by looking at, uh, through our Ready Math Program, certainly new curriculum to a lot of students. Hot word here lately. Um, we've tried to revamp our executive functioning class. I'm going to explain to you what that class is in a moment as well and how, how we're using that. And then also just, um, you know, the conversation is about us. Um, you'll see some scoreboards here in, in a bit. And what we know and the purpose for the scoreboards are when you talk and everybody knows about goals, 80% of the time, you're going to need them. So we've learned that through some training. So we've really tried to blast that and plaster all that across our school, all of our goals. So student, staff, uh, and parents, as they walk in, you'll see a big board with our goals. So currently, at our latest, uh, most recent diagnostic, the winter diagnostic, we had jumped up to 20%. So, um, we're about halfway to our 31% goal. So I think we're on pace. That's excellent. Um, that's a testament to our teachers and the hard work of our students. And I think that, that executive functioning, what we're doing in that class is starting to pay off in addition to what the curriculum is providing us in the regular classroom. Um, so I'll show you some numbers, uh, here with math. So the top bar there, so you see the green, the yellow, the red, um, the darkest red, uh, is students that are multiple three or more grade levels behind when they came to us, uh, this year. That, that's 44% if you can't quite read it. Um, the lighter shade red is 14% of students that are two or more. You can see just by looking at that top bar and comparing it to the winter math diagnostic that we shortened that number. That's a good thing. We want to keep going in that direction. You can also see that the green bars, the one with striped lines and the solid one combined to make about 11% in the top one. Those are students that are either on grade level or mid to above grade level thus far. Uh, you can see that those have increased as well. So we're making great progress at both ends, shrinking that achievement gap. Uh, what you don't see here in some numbers I want to provide you also are, as we look at subgroups, specifically our achievement gap of African-American Hispanics. Uh, uh, our Hispanic group has made ridiculous jumps this year. It, it's fantastic. If you look at our data on address. Basically, uh, they are not only meeting their expected growth, they're starting to hit some, hit some of their stretch growth. So, uh, looking at those subgroups is exciting. And also, which isn't typical, our African-American students are progressing and pacing at the same pace as some of our white students. So that's excellent news to have. So we will continue to monitor that, uh, in the math, math goals. Um, and I'll go on to reading as well. Reading, our, our goal, um, again, was to increase, uh, students, the number of students at above grade level by 20% schoolwide to 58% overall. Uh, we are using the Scantron to progress monitor. This is again, is a diagnostic that we do three times a year. Um, our most recent one was done in the winter, uh, here in January. Um, we are taking some action plan steps again in that executive functioning and we're really trying to focus on our nonfiction reading. We noticed that students, uh, struggle in those areas, specifically comprehension. Um, so we are using a couple of free resources, Common Lit and New Zella, uh, or New Zia Life, depending on how you state that. These are allowing us to not only give students content that's relevant to them. They can choose an article that's interesting, interesting to them. But it's also giving us a short diagnostic piece each time they do it. So we can track that as a S I P team. Uh, so currently we're at 38% overall. We're not quite on pace, uh, but certainly showing improvement there, uh, looking at that, that, uh, results. As you can see here, uh, this is interesting because we've been pretty stagnant, uh, in the red area. But our green is continuing to grow, uh, which is what we want. I want that to just really be all green, about 80%. We want it all to be 100% green, truthfully, but, um, we are, we are progressing in the right direction. You know, towards our goal. So that's, that's excellent. So again, goodness to our students and our staff. Our last goal dealt with attendance and truancy. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, 93% was our goal. That's a typo. I should say 88% with our midterm rate right now. We're not currently meeting that goal. Um, and there's a few reasons for that, um, in my estimation. One, we have, uh, many students that again are still struggling from the effects of COVID and recovering from that. Uh, we believe that their, their school stamina isn't quite back to where it was pre-COVID. Uh, so trying to build up to that, we've seen improvement in that. Uh, but also we have just a lot of illness that's still, still going around. So these are our attendance rates as of they stand, uh, this previous month. So 88% for the seventh grade, 87% for the eighth grade. Uh, the glaring number that concerns me most is that in the, the eyes of the state, if you have 10 or more absences, you're considered a chronic truant. 66 of our students at Churchill are considered chronic truant right now. Uh, so these are students that, uh, we have, you know, really put a focus on, uh, Mr. Pickrell and Outrecks. These are ones that they're meeting with regularly, going to their houses, trying to encourage them to come. They may have went through the truancy review process with the R O E. Uh, they're ones that, you know, if you've heard me speak at some of our, our meetings with the public, we've really tried to drum up some mentoring support. So I've had Galesford Fire Department in, Galesford Police Department in, we're just trying, uh, radio DJs, aldermen, uh, alderwomen, real estate people. So we're just trying to find interest of our kids. And I came about that stuff by polling the students. What are you interested? Who would you like to meet with? Um, and then, you know, thankfully we have people that are donating their time and coming in. So just trying to build the relationships that way. And what we do is we do a great meet. You may have seen that in some of my board notes where we just provide an opportunity for students and those folks that volunteer their time just to come in and share meals together. There's no agenda. There's no pressure. If you don't want to eat with the person, you don't have to. But most of the kids really like to learn about, you know, what's a fireman do on a daily basis or a police officer. So it's just pretty interesting. And it also spurs, uh, you know, that creative imagination of what they can do later in their life. So I think it's beneficial in many, many ways. So super proud of, of Mr. Pickrell with that work. But again, we have a long way to go. So I mentioned our executive functioning class earlier. Um, and what we do is we spend this time, if you may have, if you've heard advisory or advocacy, it's similar to that, except that this is a full period of our day. We spend that time with extra support and emphasis on improving our math and reading. Um, we have taken a step further this, this year, and this is maybe just my type A personality. I like to organize things so they're specific. And I think teachers really appreciate that too, knowing what you expect. So we took the schedule and we just said, this is what we want each day. So for example, on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, you're doing 25 minutes of your I-Ready My Path. This is a designated path that's student-specific. Um, staff is available to give students support as needed. But there's also a component where at the end of that, you're also doing some readings. We're mixing it up as well. Uh, we do some math enrichment on the other days. Uh, that could be little things like, uh, flashcards. It could be, uh, comprehension checks, um, through, through the I-Ready Math Program. There's just a lot of different things, excuse me, that students, uh, you know, have access to. We do some goal setting and some team building on Thursdays and S C L work as well. So this is where we do our three, sweet 360 work with the students, always under the guidance of a staff member. Uh, it allows students to really progress, monitor and self-monitor, which is an important piece. I mean, anytime, I think if you set a goal for yourself and you're able to reflect back on that goal where you're at, it's more powerful than if someone else is telling you, you're not doing this or you need to do this. So we really try, um, to embrace that and emphasize that in that class. Uh, these are some of the scoreboard ideas I was talking about. So if you walk into Churchill, um, we've covered up one of the trophy cases with, um, some reading and math data that I just shared with you. Uh, we also, you'll see some, if you walk in, you'll see some individual papers where we do those comprehension checks and we're always updating that about every three weeks. Also on the classroom door up there, you'll see attendance numbers. So again, we're constantly talking about what the goal is, where we want to be. And then what the kids do is they calculate that attendance, uh, every Friday for their first grade class. The kids do that. It's not something the teachers have to worry about. It's a real formula game machine. Here's the formula. Here's how you do it. It's a learning experience for them and they can keep track of that. So every door in our building, if they have a first period, has this on there. This is an example of someone that has 93% or above for, for that week. Uh, we have, uh, another one that's below from 83 to 92% and then one that's below. And that also gives us a visual of what classrooms, like, you know, if I'm walking around, it's real easy to be a pop into a class that's doing a really great job. We just say, hey, great job. Let's keep up the good work. Or at the same time, walk into a classroom that may need some motivation and how I can help those kids. So a real easy thing for us. So that's, that's proven real beneficial. Uh, we've also had, I know I'm running out of time, so try and hurry, um, some 1003A activities. This is a grant. If you remember, I believe it was three years ago, uh, we were designated as an underperforming school due to some attendance issues with our I P students. As a result, the state, uh, throws a bunch of money at, at you to help improve that. So we've tried to tie some of those activities into engaging parents and students and more, uh, things that are, are, you know, where we feel are, are we going forward with in the future. So things like, um, parent support groups. Mr. Devon Euros, our family engagement specialist, has ran two of these already this year. He runs one monthly, um, and doubled size from the first to the second. Um, and we let parents dictate kind of what they want to talk about. It's not we're talking at them. They're talking to us and we're listening. So some of the things that we've talked about thus far in the middle there, um, just some really important things that, um, parents need support with. And it's kind of turned into almost, if you've been to one, it's almost like a self-counseling session where people are just leaning on each other and going, yeah, my kid does that too. And it's, it's, it's just really beneficial to have that. So good feedback for us as well. We also just recently had an exploration of college and career pathways night at the G A V Center for our incoming freshmen next year. So, uh, thanks to Mr. Houston and his staff, uh, the counselors at the high school. Uh, parents were able to stop out with their students, ask questions. They were able to get their hands dirty. Some, some kids have never, you know, flown a drone. Some kids have never used a, a, a wrench. I mean, and things like that. So to put them, those things in their hands and give them an experience, it just gives them an idea of the coursework that they can sign up for in the future. I think that's just really valuable experience for them. So what's next? Um, so currently this week, we are signing up our eight, current eighth graders for our freshman courses for next year. The counselors came today, so I know there was some talk about that last board meeting where we're at, so I'll update you certainly on that. Uh, they're coming back on Thursday to sit down with the individual students on to sign up classes. Uh, we're also going to be finalizing our Yale Scholar and Upward Bound, Upward Bound Math Science Programs. This is really important. This is a free college opportunity for, for Galesford students that doesn't really get taken advantage of enough in my opinion. So, uh, if you have a student, uh, that's an eighth grader, this is critical. I have them talk with myself and Mr. Van Buren at the school. Uh, really, really important. We have our I R, I S A testing coming up. Additionally, we do some stuff with Illinois surveys, give feedback, uh, to the state. Uh, that helps us, uh, direct some of our programming. Uh, a new thing this year is the Zella Career Exploration. I think Mr. Houston's talked about that in the past. That's where, um, students can log in and find out, um, you know, potential career paths for them, uh, based on their interest. So an excellent program. We're doing that for eighth graders. And then we will be enrolling sixth and seventh graders, incoming sixth and seventh graders for classes soon. The last two things that I think are paramount are a celebration of Churchill. So with the school building closing, uh, we are in the planning stages of that. I have former teachers already on a committee that are helping me, uh, do that. So we have an activity that we're having quite seldom a date, but we're looking at May. Uh, it's not too hot in the building and then the weather's going to be just perfect. We'll be getting folks in the building one last time to do a celebration. Uh, looking at doing a dance for students, uh, those types of things. And then finally, in August, we will be putting together a seven, eight, nine, really a seven through 12 orientation night. Because we know many students that are coming out there, this will be a new experience for them. So the ability to get them into the building, uh, lock around. So we have a lot on our plate coming up, certainly in the next few months. But we're excited about the challenge. So I've talked for way too long, so I appreciate your time.
Any questions?
When you said your attendance is 88% and it's grown and not as much as you wanted, what was the first semester? The first term?
We were, we've been pretty stagnant. We've really been around 87, 88% all year. And I really, we really were, I guess, ambitious in that 93% goal. You know, how we reacted to that number was looking at, again, pre-pandemic numbers and those were obviously pushing our party.
Um, looking at the math, you were talking about the subgroups, um, African-American and the Hispanic. You said it jumped higher.
Jumped quite a bit. Um, can you attribute that to anything in particular? Was there something different that was happening?
Uh, I think it, one, is our curriculum with the I-Ready Math Program. Um, and also the work of our teachers in the executive functioning class where we're actually spending, you know, more minutes a day and just getting the regular, the regular class setting. So they're actually getting, uh, you know, not only that direct instruction in the classroom, but if they have questions, they have the ability to go over that with another teacher at another time. Um, oftentimes, uh, our students don't have quiet places to, to work at home at the end of the day. So we also have a tutoring program I think has been beneficial. Um, that's open to all students on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I didn't mention that, so I think that's another powerful piece, piece that's, that's there. But, um, yeah, those are exciting numbers. I hope that they continue to continue that trend.
And then another thing that I wanted to talk about too is you were mentioning that you started bringing community members in, um, from professions. I mean, as an example, what's another way that we as a board might be able to better support, um, our seventh and ninth grade, you know, from now to the end of the year, also going in and transitioning into the seven, 12 building with our junior high? What is it that you need more support with as far as, you know, behaviors and that? Just overall that we can assist with, that this district can, you know, support you with?
I don't know if I can, you know, pinpoint one thing. There's, it just, a lot depends on a certain day sometimes. I mean, certainly getting the scheduling going, I think is going to help ease a lot of tension, both with students and staff. And we're heading in that direction. I mean, a lot of our staff certainly want to know, where am I going to be? What room am I going to be in next year? So there's some of those things that, that we are working through. I don't want to sound like we're not. But, um, I think there's just a lot of anxiety right now amongst the staff in that regard. And also to our students that are going into a brand new building, you know, they haven't seen. So I think more of these orientation nights, more of the ability to get out and explore what we have, the more we can do that, the better. I think that's just going to prepare them for next year more. In terms of like behavior and like attendance and things like that, I think we have, um, the right people in place and the right positions in place. I just don't know, you know, how much, you know, education is valued anymore as a, in, in regards to my, to my time, I guess, and times before me. There are other things that are pulling away from education. This is Nick, um, the personal opinion speaking, not, not the principal. I don't think they're clear. But I just think that there are other things out there that are stealing the attention of school. And we're fighting, and I'll give you one example, cell phone, social media is just constantly, we're battling, battling that constantly within our school. And it's, it's disrupting classes. It's, it's being used for, for negative things like recording fights. So just as we, as we look at, um, you know, code of conduct and things like that, those are things that we want to consider, how we want to approach that. So from, from your guys' standpoint, I think that would be, be very helpful.
Mr. Guy, I noticed that you had 66 students that are considered chronic truant. That's pretty substantial. That's about 12% of your student population. And you listed a whole bunch of things that we're doing to engage those students. Is anything in particular reaching those students to get them back in the classroom or are they continuing to be chronically truant?
I don't have any, you know, strong data here. The assessment thing or another is working. I wish I had that to provide to you. What, what I can tell you is what we're trying isn't good enough right now. So, um, that's, that's putting it bluntly. If we have 66, that's 66 too many. And, um, I, I think oftentimes, again, there are things that get in the way of getting kids to, to school. The, the thing that you're not seeing are, you know, the 35 kids that are lined up every morning at the front table that are late to school. That aren't marked as chronic transition, plow late. And, um, that's concerning to me because then they're walking into class late and disrupting other, other students' learn, learning. So. So there's a lot of, you know, other things that I guess that aren't often seen that concern me that we're trying to work through. And it's, you can consequence the daylights out of students, you can, you can be positive to students. Those things tend to run their course until there's, you know, that internal motivation. We talk about this a lot at our coordinations, you know, that internal motivation to want to do something, want to be part of something. That's what I'm trying to reach kids with the mentoring. That's what I'm trying to reach kids with, with the interest surveys. And, you know, if I'm interested in something and if I love it, I'm going to be there, I'm going to be there in time to do it. So I think that's our best bet right now going forward. So, you know, some of this G A B C work and things like that, you know, we have students that two plus two isn't, isn't their jam all the time. They want to get their hands dirty. So, you know, I applaud you for expanding that program and doing that building. That's wonderful. We have kids that, I had a kid today that came to me in the hallway and was like, I, I love music. Is there any way we can do a music club? And the immediate answer is yes, absolutely. I'm never going to tell a kid that they can't do a club. It's just, you know, finding time to do that. I told him, here's what you need to do, find a teacher that's willing to do that, we're going to do it. And if no one wants to do it, you come find me. And if it's me spending time after school, I'll do it. And it's, that's why I got into professions. So really just driving those interests of kids and trying to just build on that, that's, I think, our best shot.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next we have another presentation that's not on the agenda. Last minute addition, a gentleman from Clean Energy Designs, going to speak to us about, there you go. Yeah, the authority is mine. Just make sure to speak into the microphone.
We'll start off with the update on Silas, construction. You see the site plan? There we go. Okay, we've got the, for Silas Willard, we've got the site plan finalized. We've got the interconnection now from utility. And we're now waiting on the geotech reports coming back from engineering so that we know what depth to put the piles for the support of the carport. Is, is, is this, did everybody see this okay?
Yes.
So this will be, we will show a picture of what the actual steel looks like that the carport will be placed on. But this is the layout and that includes an eighty-two KW solar system, which is one hundred and fifty-two solar panels. And that'll all feed directly into the building behind the meter. And that will help offset one-for-one kilowatt hours that, that's schools currently buying from the utility. So that's on schedule to start sometime in May. And we'll do some coordination with everybody for the parking lot. That, that is on schedule now. So that's, I just wanted to present that to you and let you know how that is going.
Do you have the schematic that shows it as well, or just that picture?
That's the site plan.
I haven't seen that.
The, the engineering for that isn't quite done. But when that is done, I will get it to Dr. Aspen and he can circulate that to the board members.
Oh, I just. I, I just wanted to comment that, you know, having construction in May, we're still in, in school in May. So either we need to coordinate with the staff to.
Yes, we'll, we'll coordinate that. We'll get coordinated to start right after school's out so that, you know, we can, that there'd be some preliminary things we can do on the building and so forth in preparation for the construction.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll definitely not be doing the parking lot during school.
So you horizontally drilled the line all the way into the building then?
How's the? Yes, there's a couple of more spots and then I'll go right over to behind the building for the location.
What's the timeframe for flipping the switch for the line?
If all of our parts come in for the, for the electrical portion of it, we'd like to be done before school starts again in the fall. Be one hundred percent turned on, you know, everything done is, is our goal. If we, we can make that happen. I was going to give you another update on the current system, but, but I'll lean back to availability of transformers and things like that. They, they say it has a certain lead time and then they show up that it's not the case, that that's the correct lead time. So that's creating a complete chaos. But that's the goal, is to get that before school starts.
And for the audience that may not know, this is for covered parking in the Silas Willard parking lot with solar panels on top of it. So kind of sort of have a dual function for us.
You're going to have to add a water for the parking tracks? So that's, that's Silas Willard. The next update, which I don't have a slide on, is the system that's, that's actually in place. We have everything needed to make interconnections to the utility with the exception of the transformer. And the transformer is scheduled to be here in three to four weeks. And that was ordered last July. So other than that, we're ready to energize it. And then the subscription.
So subscriptions start after it's energized?
Yes.
So where's the power go once it's energized though?
There'll still be, there'll still be a credit for that. All the energy that is produced and then along the grid or to the utility, that'll be a reference credit that will then be distributed through Community Solar, the subscription program. So it's kind of like, I guess, bank until that's utilized through the utility source, subscription.
Will we be able to sign people up before the end of the school year?
Yes, yes. We have another slide. Let's see, that's, that's a good, that's a good one too. We could start there. This is a map. Remember last year, pretty much all of Galesburg was eligible for the subscription program? January first with the redistricting. It now has only this area and that area. Here's the railroad track going through, direct through the center of town. But these are the two areas that are eligible for that subscription from the low end of the town.
Redistricting by who?
The, the census.
What's the northern boundary then? What, what street is that?
I'll have, I'm not sure. Because we don't know the eastern boundary anymore.
So cover really doesn't mean anything, right?
Well, we will, when this, when it all happens, this is really just a shady, that'll be the area of focus for the subscriptions. By companies that are trying to derive subscriptions, that's the area that we're going to target. And then we're going to also have a kiosk or a computer here dedicated for folks that don't have access to a computer if you come in and sign up online here at, at the district office as well. That Dr. Aspen and I have discussed and we can send you a quick addition.
So the shaded areas don't, don't mean anything?
Well, the shaded areas are the areas that have the, have been designated that qualify for low income subscriptions.
You said the two adjacent ones. It's not the two adjacent ones?
The, the two blue areas. Does that make sense?
I wish we moved that screen here. So we get more details, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Great.
Okay, this is the fact sheet for the Community Solar signup. We'll obviously distribute this. But here's all of the advantages, no long-term subscriptions needed. They can go to info@cd.us and they will be put on a given a detailed list of what, what is needed to submit. And that will start off the subscription process.
So this is what goes to families?
Yes.
We spoke to someone, some company sometime. We were told we have that English, Spanish and French. Is that still the case?
Oh, absolutely. That would be no problem. And we, there's still a little bit of work to be done on the process, but we're getting very close. And obviously, we're excited to get that to you as fast as we can so that folks can start signing up as soon as possible. Let's see. So I think that's about it. I'm searching all the questions.
Okay, but for. Why is the fence going up if all the electrical stuff's done? That was the serious question.
I know, I'll put it seriously. Back to the lead trade issue.
It's also because we put this thing out there.
Well, no, there's, there's, there's some fence there, but that was from the original project.
Yeah.
So the new fence to surround the entire system is order. We're waiting for updates on lead time to get in the fence. As soon as it hits, it's going in.
Okay, and one is, as I walked that property today, I noticed that when your equipment was all out there, the area to the east of the solar field is still being flooded. Are you taking care of that?
Yes, that's all going to be tilled and graded in the season.
Great.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, it's like I asked all the questions.
We'll, we'll be back with more for the next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next, the emotions approved that consent actually happened.
Slow move.
Any questions or concerns? Allison?
Uh, favor.
Hi. Next on the agenda is the student council report.
I know that there has already been a lot discussed and there will still be a lot to discuss after I'm done, so I'll keep it short. I'm just going to talk about just two things that we have upcoming, which both occur on April first. The first being the blood drive that we're going to have, this is a third one, with the American Red Cross in the G H S library. And then also again, on April first, we're going to have the Shooting Hoops and Smiling fundraiser for these special athletes in the old gym at G H S. That is it.
What time is that at? Do you have a timer?
Um, I can check on that.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, Chili's up at five and six o'clock.
Well, thank you so much. Dr. Spurrier, the curriculum reporter.
Mr. Young sent me out pretty well. I'm going to spend the time for my curriculum report to kind of reflect on where we've been in the last five years to kind of explain to the community why some items are on the agenda today. In November of twenty seventeen, we had meeting, engagement meetings. We had twenty-one of those to create Vision Twenty Thirty. Raise your hands, how many people were there at those events in the, likewise? Thank you. From the report, the idea for this Vision Twenty Thirty was to create a collection of dreams, ideas and suggestions from a diverse group of students, community members, staff and faculty, engaging all the stakeholders. And so this sets the stage for the development, development of a shared vision. And so I want to give you the key findings that we had at that time, just to kind of refresh our memories and to see what we've accomplished along the way. Some of the key themes include broadening our curricular meetings, curricular offerings to meet the needs of all learners. We've increased our intervention support. We've increased offerings within the class, classes at all grade levels. And audit of G H S courses. We just spent, the high school staff, Ms. Robinson actually mentioned some of this, reviewing our math curriculum and those courses there at the high school, removing ones that we didn't have a lot of student interest in and then having the departments that add curricular interests as well and also increasing our AP offerings this fall. A well-rounded child, we wanted arts, problem-solving opportunities. So we've increased STEM. We started music at the fifth grade level. So we have band and those things starting at those, at those very young ages. What is taught and how it is taught was another focus and key finding from that report. We made a concerted effort on professional development for staff and the integration of instructional-based strategies that are based on research. Additionally, we talked about needing interest and surveying for students to see what clubs and activities they wanted to be engaged in. That survey went out. Mr. Matthews was instrumental in that. Mrs. Hamm was instrumental in that as well. And we were able to create new clubs and activities based on that feedback. We also talked about increasing our career pathways in support for planning, enhancing our career guidance and support. Mr. Young mentioned Zella, which is a new online opportunity for us to get student interest right away. We also have ongoing work-ready graduation requirements. We increased our course offerings and alignment. You saw the enhanced G A B C center. We also talked about, another finding was the evaluation of instructional design, delivery and deep thinking, working out problem solving. So you heard even tonight, reading math and really digging deep into the data to know what students need and remediating those deficits, but also challenging those students that are ready to move on. And we've given them those pathways through that iReady model. We also talked about the science of reading. We've invested a lot of dollars and time with teachers learning the most instrumental research-based practices to help all students read and read proficiently. Additionally, phenomenon-based science, so hands-on, interactive science at the K eight level and offering a variety of courses there, including increased opportunities for AP, monitoring of student data and increased interventions and support. And we've also reviewed the use of instructional time and made sense-making blocks so that if students are in specials at an elementary, that they have that time. And it's not, how do I want to put it, parsed out in fifteen and twenty-minute increments. It was very thoughtful and, and we wanted to make sure they were manageable chunks of time along with breaks for movement. Additionally, we talked about clean buildings and a location, one location for all Galesburg junior high students to start. We've, we've accomplished that actually with Lombard Middle School. Starting fifth grade, all students are Galesburg Silver Streets at that point. And upgrading all of our facilities. You can see our building projects which are coming to fruition and that actually projects are ending. And then also student voice. We've had students on our committees for all of our scheduling. We've also had our school improvement and our school, and our involvement. We have students on the older levels of school improvement boards. We also are asking surveys. I went out with a group of people in the spring and we actually were able to survey students during the cafeteria, in the cafeteria during that lunchtime to see what their thoughts were as we were moving into the seven, twelve opportunity. So that kind of gave us some buckets, if you will, to focus our efforts on, which includes refining and broadening our curricular offerings for instruction curriculum, focus on a building and facilities to make them twenty-first century learning spaces that are air-conditioned and comfortable for both staff and students, and enhancing our instruction for deep learning. That involves a review of our schedules, the strategies we're using, the courses we are offering. And so I want to make sure that the community is aware that the work began to address this starting back in twenty seventeen with that Vision Twenty Thirty. We had buildings and grounds committees. We also had a seven, twelve scheduling committee that I was able to help facilitate. We had forty-two members on that committee with parents, teachers, administrators. I even pulled business owners to help with that. Five, six scheduling committee had an equally large number of teachers and parents, roughly around twenty, and then the K four committee had twenty. I think the, the thing that I appreciate the most is during this time, we had negotiations with our union. And it was so important to both the union and the board that we focused on section twenty-nine point one being our contract on page thirty-six where it states, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we will have an eight-hour day for staff, which meant that we needed to revisit while we're doing these schedules, what that instructional day looks like. So our schedules went to seven hours and fifteen minutes based on this curricular work with the committees. And another piece to also remember is that the board initiated goal setting for us. So as you saw in Mr. Young's presentation, he talked about chronic truancy. That is a goal for all buildings. Additionally, reading and math. So we've increased our outreach and S E L support services to address the chronic truancy. Reading and math, we've done realignment of our curricular plans on those levels. We're also purchasing resources to support teacher instruction. Additionally, we have an algebra readiness goal. Additionally, we have an algebra readiness goal, making sure that our eighth graders are algebra-ready. So the iReady piece helps to advance or remediate that, moving more students towards that mark. Additionally, the last board goal was to be college-ready, which meant, you saw in our presentation last month where we talked about leveling up. We want to increase the courses that we offer at the high school while also adding supports. I mentioned this multiple times, increasing those AP opportunities, expanding our GAVC, and essentially leveling up so students can take those rigorous courses and still have a soft place to land, knowing that, you know, they have the opportunity to try hard things and still were able to be recognized for that excellence. So I think that's important to note. Any questions?
That was quite good.
Well, I was trying to sum up five years. So I mean, so I'd be willing to answer anything.
No, I'm glad that you did that because I think that one of the, sitting at this table for seven years, I think one of the things that we attempted to do with our agenda, right, is to focus our agenda on our goals and focus areas that came out of those community engagement meetings. And we don't often take the time to go back to that list in that way and say, here are the direct correlations over the last several years on how that work has continued and where we're at now. And so I appreciate that you took us down a little bit of memory lane because I do sense that oftentimes, and we've had a lot happen in the last several years, COVID interrupted a lot of things. The focus on health and safety, the focus on those things, has probably drawn us away from those conversations and making those intentional connections. And so for some people who may not have been in the district at the time in 2017, people who have rightfully been focused on other things may have forgotten that all of the work that we're doing is in direct relation to those community engagement meetings that we had in 2017, and that this was, this work is informed by many voices that have been represented throughout that time. Thanks.
Sounds good. Well, thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the Special Education Report.
Good evening. You have the report that Luanne, my assistant director, put together for us. One thing to note is every year, the Special Ed, we're required to do what's called the Child Count. The official date that they use for that is December 1st. And through that Child Count, again this year, we are on a constant decline in the number of students in special education. We have decreased again by about 19 students from last year that are in Special Ed for a variety of reasons. One is we're proactively getting students out of Special Ed and back into general education environment through the MTSS process and the programs and curriculum that the district is now utilizing. And we continue to have a high rate of students who transfer in and out. Sometimes it's the same student transferring multiple times. So other than that, we did do the annual needs assessment that we're required to do for our grants. And again, it's the same systemic areas of concerns. They have you focused on the behaviors of the students that we're dealing with. And I think just from the trauma that all of our students have experienced with COVID and shutdown and isolation and everything else, we're seeing a high increase in some pretty significant behaviors of the students as they return. So we're working with the SEL Team on Wheels and the SEL Group to try to address the needs of those students.
Any questions? Thank you so much. Next, made a motion to consider approval of scheduling proposal.
So moved.
Okay.
Do you have specific questions on the schedule? I can start with K-4 if you prefer.
Yes, the study page.
Okay, you have? So you have a folder that includes the documentation from the committee meetings? We had 20 individuals involved in that. You'll see that on this first page. And you'll also see the documents as K-4 specials ideas explained. That was from the committee. It was an easy way for you to kind of get a snapshot of the goal. Essentially, we wanted to have PE every day. We're putting that on a rotational basis like we did this year. We now have STEM as well. But on the second sheet, I would like for you to notice they asked for additional instructional time built into their school day. On that second sheet, it says, "Much of our feedback expressed the need for more instructional time built into the school day. The proposed schedule provides an additional 45 minutes. Instructional days proposed to start at 8:00, end at 3:15. This provides for seven hours and 15 minutes in a school day, which is what I referred to earlier." We also talked about recess during the lunchtime and in the additional recess throughout the day. We did want initially that built-in delayed start, but we see that that's not a possibility at this point. But we are, I also want you to see our group think. At the very beginning, we had a once, what are the challenges? What are some of the questions that we need to ask to overcome these obstacles? So that's just there for you. And I also left you with a presentation at the very end that was provided in December of this year as a reminder, this is the schedule. Are there still questions? So I just gave you that presentation with the older schedule. We have altered the times that I shared with member Sherby. I don't know what you want to ask him about.
Are these the correct times on this?
The correct times are not on that because I wanted you to see exactly what was given to teachers.
Okay.
But since the board has requested the new times, I provided that to you. I don't know if you want to, I can pull that right up. That is what the team got. That's what the team in December, that was their feedback. The new times. So the proposed time for K-4 is 8:15 to 3:30, based on the last email I sent you today.
Yes.
Yes. 8:15 in the morning to 3:30.
Okay, I'm just going to go through, I'm going to go through all of you because I know everybody, this is what they want to know.
Yes.
Yes.
This is when your students start their?
Their instructional day, the first time that the bell rings for them to be in the class. Yes.
So for K-4, it'd be 8:15 till 3:30?
Yes.
Where is it?
8:15.
Yeah, that's your.
The ones that we're giving you today are the revised ones.
So the accurate is 8:15 to 3:30?
Yes.
Okay, we got that, 8:15 to 3:30.
So the proposed was 7:50 to 2:05.
Yes, it was.
And now we're proposing 8:15 till 3:30 for K-4.
And it currently, students start at nine o'clock and end at?
3:30.
3:30. So let's just, would be, the difference is starting 45 minutes earlier for K-4. Okay. I'm going to move on real quick since I got it right in front of me. Move on to Lombard, which is, you know, fifth and sixth graders. They would start at eight, students start at 8:00 AM and be done at 3:50.
Correct.
And the initial was 7:40 to 2:55, correct?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Okay, so currently Lombard, the students start at 8:50 and?
And 3:40.
And 3:40. So they'd actually be getting there a little bit earlier.
Yes, absolutely.
And then finally, at the high school, which next year will be 7:12. The students will start at 7:40.
Which is true at 7:40.
And they'll be done at 2:55.
Correct.
And proposed, first proposal was 8:35 to 3:50, correct?
Correct. And I want to clarify that, too. We were asked to look at those later start times by the board to say, here's the pros, here's the cons. And we felt that when we looked at all of these pieces, the cons far outweighed the pros at this point without further investigation. I mean, some of the comments that Mrs. Robinson actually shared were some of the cons I listed directly on that slide. So, I mean, those were concerns of mine. Additionally, you know, my concern about those students who work, who typically take a four o'clock shift, they would not be able to do that.
Yes, we talked about that. And we talked about the number, I mean, we had a full spreadsheet last month about the number of athletes that would be.
Absolutely. I mean, inasmuch as I appreciate the board wanting me to look, look through that information, see how it applies to us, at this point, we didn't feel like that was a change that needed to make, to take place.
I agree with that.
People will be very happy with that.
I also appreciate all the work that everybody did because when we ask you to do something like that.
Start digging, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of, often sometimes ask for stuff that requires a great deal of work for a great many people. And it's appreciated because there is research data that is, you know, about, you know, high school students starting later.
Absolutely.
A lot of good information. Particularly that it's appropriate for us to study.
I agree.
A lot of changes.
So are we, we're voting on the schedules.
I just wanted to clarify the time right now.
Yes.
What we're talking about is the student schedules. The teachers, it's still irresponsible to give you 20 minutes before and?
25 after.
Yeah, as per time right there.
So you're just going on the start and end times for the three different levels.
Okay, so this one here is scheduling proposal. Then we got building start times.
Sorry.
So, so right now, it's just the schedules?
Correct.
Which would be?
Which is what you sent us.
What you guys do?
It is, you'll just have to reflect the times.
Right, yes.
Okay.
You also have the updated high school schedule with the new times. We were able to manage that, but we had to wait on a couple other bus issues, which is why we weren't able to give you the updated times on the K-6. So you should have that in this packet, updated.
Yes.
First page.
Yes, it is. So they'll end up being able to have 50-minute periods.
So if the K-4 start at 8:15 and we don't start till 8:50 now?
Correct.
Something like that, 45 minutes in the morning. The 45 minutes in the morning is still used for breakfast and the classroom announcements and morning meetings.
No, no, not the full 45 minutes.
That's, that's what I was thinking because on this, the times are different, but it says from 7:50 to 8:35 is breakfast and the classroom announcements and morning meetings. And I think that that is a little too long for that.
That's just part of what they'll start on at that point, and then they go right into their instruction. So yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Good question.
I was just thinking that's a little too long for them now.
I agree. I just linked it into the top for you.
And if we're also have the PALS program available before and after?
We will. And I've also talked to Mr. Sampson at the YMCA to increase some of our support there for the 7, 8, and 9 because the campus will be right behind him. And he's willing to help with even busing some students if they wanted to go early in the morning and getting them to school and then busing them back for some afternoon activities and team center that he's working on.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Do we have any more questions concerning the scheduling proposal?
The scheduling is basically just when people are starting and they're exiting the day. All the other issues between that time isn't part of this discussion, correct?
Who you asking? That's Dr. Springer.
So essentially, member Line, this is just the instructional blocks as you're referring to. Yes, so the schedules that I provided to you, negligent of the times that are on the left-hand columns, you're looking at the instructional day. You see that there's 45-minute specials for the elementary on a rotational basis, offering those things at the top, art, music, STEM, those components. And then at the middle level, you'll see that they have their class periods. And then you see the lunch recess. Grade 5 is at the top of that, grade 6 is at the bottom. And then 7:12, you'll see it's broken up into 50-minute periods along with the lunches and the advocacy. So really just the instructional blocks, if you want to think of it that way, versus times.
Okay. Allison?
Phelps?
Yep.
Here it is.
Aye.
Aye.
Testan, aye. Montes, aye. Lyon?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we need a motion to consider approval of building start times.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, that was what I just read to everybody.
Do you want me to reread it one more time?
Yes.
For the sake of this. So kindergarten through fourth grade will start at 8:15 and will end at 3:30. Fifth and sixth grade at Lombard will start at AP, A to M, and end at 3:15 PM. And then the 7th through 12th grade building will start at 7:40 AM and end at 2:55 PM. Those are the proposed times.
Will there be any changes to the part futures?
Not that, not that we see at this point, no.
And Mrs. Kirby?
Yes.
Doesn't that leave the high school schedule short five minutes?
They go 7:40 to 2:40 right now, right?
7:40, 2:35.
I was thinking of the teacher day. Because the contract calls for 20 minutes before, 20 minutes after.
We're not including that time within the component. This is just student contact time. So you have the 7:40 to 2:40 plus the 15 would give it to 2:55.
It does, Dr. Springer, it says 25 before, 20 after, correct?
The contract is 24.
Contract's 24.
It says 20, 20.
Yes, 20 and 20 session. 29.1B. That's my concern. It's not adding up to the eight hour.
It said at least 20 minutes, though. That's how we read it. And they wanted it up to an eight-hour day, correct? According to 29.1B.
Yes, at least.
No, I think that's accurate.
It is accurate, yes.
Feedback gives seven hours and 15 minutes of student time
45 minutes.
And eight hours for teacher.
Yep. No, it says at least 20, so you'd have to make up the five minutes on either side. It said at least 20. That's where you get, you can put the 25.
Isn't that, isn't the teacher, it's 24, 20 after, that's right?
At least.
At least. But in order to make up your eight-hour day.
25 and 1 after, okay. The authority at that level of the elementary. We want to be a unit of students. Allison?
Kirby? Aye. Kirby?
Aye.
Montes?
Aye.
Testan?
Aye.
Lyon?
Yes.
Phelps?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we need a motion to consider approval of high school credit recommendations.
So moved.
Right.
Dr. Springer?
Are there any questions on the step-down model that was provided to you? I also have Mr. Hawkins and Ms. Escobar here as well to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, I, on the credits for class twenty-two, I'm sorry, I, what is the asterisk next to computer literacy and T notes?
So in my email, that was related? I sent that, yeah, yeah. In the response, it was that there was a new requirement for incoming freshmen that they had to have a, one credit over the course of their four years by the time they graduated. That's an Illinois state requirement. There is no workaround on that as far as things are concerned. And to your other question about could we embed this in other ways, we could absolutely put it into other classrooms. I think that's a tall order for the classroom teachers who are trying to really focus on their content area, to have to explicitly teach the technology. So we have two different pathways. We have emerging technologies one and two, which is more of like the exploratory component, and then you have computer tech one and computer tech two, which is also application-based, and those are all within the course guide at this point. There's also the flexibility of them being semester courses, so you can weave them in when they fit most appropriately for your schedule.
Thank you.
Allison?
Kirby?
Aye.
Best Cam? Montes?
Aye.
Lyon?
Yes.
Phelps?
Aye.
Everidge?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is building reports. Everybody's receiving them. Do they have any questions or comments? Thank you to the administrators that provided the building report, appreciate it. Next, a report from the building and grounds committee.
No pictures this month, but I will say the high school complex is coming along very nice, the north addition. If you have anything down to there, please go through there, that, that, that's gonna be amazing. We did have a meeting with Russell and the construction of the Performing Arts Center and got pretty direct on is that facility gonna be done so that we can use it? Have my fingers crossed, there's a lot still has to happen in there. I've been through there a couple times, and I told them if the people sitting on the stage on their phone would get up and work, we might have it done. That didn't sit very well, but I was serious. There's just a lot of labor in there that doesn't do anything, appears to me, but I'm not a contractor, I'm a farmer. So bear with us on that one, trust us that we've got the heat turned up on contractors to have that Performing Arts Center done. It's gonna be an amazing facility, but it needs to be done. Now, we do realize that the band and choir rooms probably for the start of next school year won't be completely done. But the Performing Arts Center will be. It's my understanding that some, just bear with me, Maury. But every, the rest of the school will be done, and we are glazing the rest of the windows and that in the summer and some other things. So the high school project is coming along nicely. Also, if you remember last meeting, we approved the piping for the chiller. So that will be coming up here in April to, there'll be a point that they can fire the, the chiller, whatever they have to do to test on that. So, there's Brian. I didn't, I didn't know you were back in there. I would have bashed harder. Any, anything, any comments that you're aware of that I, that I'm missing?
I think it's scheduled to be done before the start of school.
Including the summer project and audit flooring and band choir. So that is the goal. There was a couple, the reason I mentioned the band choir, that you heard the solar guy talk about lead times. There was a couple things in there that the lead times were stretching, so I just want to set the correct expectations.
Yeah. Did they get the concrete in the band choir? As far as the chiller pipes, it's getting kind of warm out there today. Will we be able to turn the air conditioning on or?
So it's my understanding, and Brian can answer this better, they have to get to a certain point in that building so that they can shut all doors and everything, so that when they turn that on, the pressurization or whatever in the building has to be correct for all that to work correctly. Am I, is that layman's term I was asking happened?
Yeah, eventually they're gonna have to test and balance the whole system, but to show if I can even go in first is not what you can.
Is it here?
I don't know. I was on site today, but I didn't walk back there to double check. Any lights you got on?
Thank you. Just tell her she'll share. Do you have any questions?
Well, I will say in the north addition, I think we finished putting all floors down this week. We're really close. Just those glass guy, guys finished a little pieces left, good shake.
Yeah. Module A on the north side is getting close. Hopefully, they're scheduled by the end of March, they have that completed, so. That looks realistic whether it will be used by during that time. It's up to the district, but.
The furniture install, of course, I'll try and put it to.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Next, I need a motion to consider approval of the Bright Futures contractor award recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
So this is the real reason why I stood up.
Yes.
Do you have a question?
No, go ahead.
I get it.
So we received bids, I believe it was last week, Russell scoped out everyone. The recommendation is to approve all bids, including opening number one, which was the repainting of the entire building on three sides. Not the south side, but all the three visible sides. The Cliff Notes is the bids came in higher than what the estimate was, but there was really good turnout this time, which was a positive. There was these two bidders on every single package, and the grouping of those bidders, for the most part, were fairly close. For the bidders that weren't close, Russell did do their due diligence to make sure that the contractor with a little bid had all of the scope in the project. So this is just to remind everyone for the Bright Futures slash district office project, it's roughly forty-seven thousand square feet of renovations, including exterior improvements, which is the concrete around the building and driveline on the west side and the playground area to the west of the Bright Futures building.
So comment I'll make is, yes, the bid came in higher and raised my eyebrows. But when we look in the rears of when we did steel, same square footage, it was more money when we did steel than what we're spending for the square footage at the, at the Bright Futures building. So it is a lot of money, yes, but it is in scope of what we did spend in steel and king. So we're getting a lot more, I, steel and king are great, but what's going on in the Bright Futures, we're, we're gonna have a lot there, there's gonna be a lot to, for the kids' benefit and the, and the public's benefit. So I just want to make that clear that, yes, it did. And some of the assumptions when it was bid were some unknowns that Russell had to do and, and lick it. So it, it, yes, it came in more, but we're still okay financially, and we are within the scope of what we had to spend in other buildings.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. There was a construction budget that was given to the board. We talked about that last month. So what we did to make up the difference is we have S R three money. So we're shifting our focus. We'll be putting in a budget amendment if the board approves this tonight to increase the S R three funds that go to the project to seven million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. And then that leaves the remaining three million, two hundred and six dollars to be applied out of our fund sixty, which is part of our one cent sales tax revenues. So we feel very comfortable with, with using the S R three to, to make up the difference. The other thing that you're actually approving about six hundred thousand dollars more than the bids, and that is an additional contingency that building and grounds felt that they wanted there, given the number of unknowns at this point in time and given our economy. So just today, there were several companies that were talking about putting fuel surcharges on materials. We've seen material delivery surcharges. So we don't anticipate having to spend that money. There's a three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar contingency within the ten point four million, but we're putting an additional six hundred thousand in there just in case, not knowing what's going to happen with fuel, transportation, price of goods, supply chain in the next few months.
And that's also Rodney Skeleton money. So we don't know what we may find in some of those things in that building, same as in high school. So I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to come back to you for change orders. If you haven't heard that, I wanted to make sure that this time that we had money, make sure we covered ourselves.
Couple more questions. Because people have heard that this is over, right? Are we raising taxes? No. Are we, is our fund ratio still two to one?
Yes, it's over that.
And do we have our board policy cash on hand for the days?
Yes, we have over three hundred and fifty days cash on hand.
And our board policy only states that we have to have?
A hundred eighty.
Thank you.
On the building at nine forty, have we done moisture assessment on the floor? Can accept tile without, without more money?
We did, Russell actually did, took a con result to do that, and found that the moisture contact was above, so we built in the moisture mitigation into the bids so that it wouldn't be.
Later on, so that's all taken care of?
Yes.
And you're confident that the existing, that I'm, I'm still concerned about the HVAC that's in that building?
There are a few mechanical units that we're keeping that were about half their life when we tested them out. So it might be a future project ten years from now to replace those individual mechanical units that are gonna be serving the corridor spaces. There were two units that came up during design that needed to be replaced that are part of it, and then there are another three or four that are being removed and replaced. The main mechanical units that will serve the classrooms and the office spaces are brand new.
Thank you.
And I'll just point out as a reminder, we receive about one point two million dollars after we pay our bonds in one cent sales tax. The only thing that we can use the one cent sales tax money is for capital improvements on buildings. So once we move past these projects, we are going to be accumulating a nice sum of money every year. With the buildings our size, something always is going to happen, kind of like your house. But that would be something in the future that we would definitely have reserves in fund sixty from one cent sales revenues to, to cover in the future.
Allison?
Best Cam?
Aye.
Montes?
Aye.
Lyon?
Yes.
Phelps?
Aye.
Everidge?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye. Next, I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two facility improvement contractor award recommendations.
So moved.
Okay, so last month, we asked the board to approve the twenty-twenty-two capital improvements on steel and various projects at the current Galesburg High School property. There were two projects that we did not receive bids on, so we put those back out for bid. The first one was the athletic flooring in Wycall Gym, which needs to be replaced. And so that went out for bid, and we received a bid of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for the replacement of that floor. The second work item that we did not receive a bid for was lockers, and we did receive two bids this time with the lowest bid at a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So we're recommending that both of those projects be approved as part of the original scope for summer twenty-twenty-two.
Are those Lyon lockers still?
They are not Lyon lockers. Lyon was not specified and allowed to bid.
So let's see what they do.
Any questions? So Allison?
Montes?
Aye.
Lyon?
Yes.
Phelps?
Aye.
Everidge?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Best Cam?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. I believe the next item, is there approval of sale of the Nielsen? Can table it now, is that correct?
We are tabling that. We will be having a special board meeting hopefully very shortly here to discuss the two bids that we received today and to caption on that.
And next, I need a motion to consider approval of the revised facility lease agreement of the city of Galesburg.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Matthews?
I'm Scott. So we, we, I brought two facility agreements this year, one with the city of Galesburg, I believe. And then there was a second one that we, that I've been working with the city on one, specifically with the tennis complex as far as capital projects. That we would go together and we would partner and share that cost fifty percent. So one of the, the thing that's coming up soon is we, we need to resurface the tennis court, so we're working on, on that whole process. So the city approved it, but what, what Tony, Tony O did was he actually took both contracts and brought them together. So now we have one document and two separate documents. So that's, that's one change, and then the other change is who I would report to. I think Tony O's title might have changed, so there's just a title change. And then the contract, instead of expiring in September, we moved it up to August. So we're trying to, so when we start this school year, then we can start fresh. So that, that's, that's the changes. So it's just bringing two together, so we have one document instead of having two separate.
Where are you looking at resurfacing the tennis courts?
It would, it would, I'd like to do it this summer.
Is that something that we have to bid at, that we need to start the process on?
Yeah, it's, it's funny, there's only, only one company that I, that I've been able to get an estimate bid. And I've reached out to every athletic director I know, including, and they all use the same, for whatever reason, there's nobody else out there that resurfaces tennis courts. So I've been working with them, and then they've actually been out of the country and they just got back, so once this kind of fell into place, we'll kind of, I talked with Dr. Asmo, we would have to have it bid out. But we would share that cost as, as a community and school district, so.
Do you have people's lights up there, or is that?
Well, that, that'll be probably the next thing coming. I don't know the age of those lights. It seems like we constantly have something come up. I know we're trying to get one replaced now for our upcoming first home match so that we can play out there, so. The eyes are older than the tennis courts. Yeah, so that's They've transferred over there. That'll probably be the next thing coming, but we gotta get the playing surface up for now.
Is there, are there plans that we're going to put a restroom in that complex?
Sure.
Sure, I'm serious.
It would definitely something we need to look at.
Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, it would make things a lot easier, because we, we ran out porta potties for ten out of twelve months, or, you know, right around there, so yeah. It would, it would be helpful. Yeah. I know that the players don't like changing uniforms in a porta potty. And then happen to escort opposing players into, into our building so they can use it. Building and grounds, and you should kind of get an idea of, of something like that would pop up, for sure.
I just also wanted to thank Mr. Matthews, because he worked with the city, and before, it really did not outline who paid for capital projects. It talked about the city's commitment with the lights, and so this is able, he was able to bring us an agreement that allowed for a fifty-fifty split of those capital projects. So I appreciate that, that's
Yeah, because we really pretty much assume all the cost of, of everything out there, so I thought it was, and they agreed, like, this is fair. I mean, we both, we both used that facility quite a bit, so being able to have that partnership a fifty percent, I mean, made sense to me, and they agreed as well, so it'll, it'll be beneficial.
In the contract, it says they act the community's access to the field house for walking. What do people get advantage of that?
We've never had it since, well, we put it in and then COVID, so it's, it's, it's kind of fallen to the wayside, because we've, we've never been able to, to kind of
So we'll see you next year.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Allison?
Montes?
Aye.
Lyon?
Yes.
Phelps?
Aye.
Everidge?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Best Cam?
Aye.
Want to order, President Kirby?
Yes.
Just like to, just like to remind everybody to use their microphones so that the recording can pick us up, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda, I need a motion to consider approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar.
So moved.
Second.
We've all seen the calendar for at least a couple of meetings. Any questions or questions? Allison?
Aye.
Yes.
Phelps?
Aye.
Everidge?
Aye.
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 I swear, I hid no respect at this table.
Aye.
Okay, next we have a discussion of the twenty-two, twenty-three fee proposals.
It, it's very simple, yes, so I'd like to thank the board for making this one of my tasks throughout the year, very simple, because we don't have any fees, so there's nothing to discuss. The only change that is on here is that each year we do have to increase the school lunch and breakfast fees by ten cents. And so we did that, but those are only for additional meals and for adult meals. So once again, all of our students are eligible for free breakfast and lunch, so no one has to pay. But if an adult wants to purchase a meal or a breakfast, we do have to increase those, so that is the only request. There's nothing to vote on tonight. We're still planning on Uh, we're still planning on doing school supplies for all of our students. So literally it is a free education. When you come to Galesburg, there is nothing, there is nothing for your family to pay.
That's, that's why most school districts, right?
It is, it is like no other school district in fact in the state of Illinois. We are the only one that I'm aware of that has zero fees.
Wow, that's excellent.
And it's cool. So we'll ask you to vote on this next month. What a novel idea, public education, right?
Next, I need a motion to consider the approval of the GABC equipment disposal.
District.
C. Oh. Oh, another discussion, the district activity accounts discussion.
All right, so in front of you, you have a list of some activity account changes that we're recommending. Once again, you're not voting on this tonight. These are just recommended changes. A couple of years ago, when we closed Gale and Nielsen School, we really changed and kind of altered our elementary activity counts to reduce those down to three per, per school. And there were some accounts from GHS that just simply had not been used for years and years and years. So the proposal is, is that for those accounts that we're looking to close, that those would be transferred into a 712 CIS account, which is also an activity account, but that is for the principal to use for the benefit of curriculum instruction and students.
Well, that's CIS.
CIS, curriculum instruction and students, yes, yes. The other item that we'll be asking you to vote on next month is to create accounts for the class of 2024, 2025, and then spring concessions as part of the new collective bargaining agreement with the GEA. We created a spring concessions that was never an activity before. That was, we only had winter and fall. Um, and we have lots of activities that happen in the spring. And unfortunately for track and softball and baseball parents, they all had to do their own concessions. So this year, we're treating that the same as we have all of our other sports. And there will be a concession manager, so we track each season separately so that the clubs and activities that work that get the profit off of them. So we just need to create a second or a third, excuse me, uh, activity account for that. So there are lots of, um, lots of accounts in here. If you have questions over the next month, please let me know. Um, this is an actual Skywood Report, this one. The negatives are actually positive. So that's, it's the way that it, I know it's, it's very strange, but negative means positive. It's good where the activity accounts are concerned, so.
What is called Q?
A Q account is, so at the end of each fiscal year, whatever line items have surplus revenues in them, gets swept into a general pot of money. So that becomes your reserve for your fund ten. There are certain Q accounts where we carry over those balances because we want to track that money specifically. So if we didn't do that, for instance, BAND has a Q account. That money that is specifically set aside for BAND, which is part of the gate receipts from football, would get swept up into the general revenue account. And we don't want to do that. We want to track that money from year to year. So we have Q accounts for that specific reason, but they're housed within the F Fund.
Thank you.
All of these accounts that we're closing have no longer been used.
Correct.
Because they're Churchill and Lawford and somebody's club are no longer a club?
Correct.
Okay.
And with GHS, so from my understanding, from what we can piece together, uh, back in the day when money was tighter and the district wasn't supporting things as they did, each department had a activity account that they would do many fundraisers. The business department had a huge vending machine that sold pencils and pens and notebooks and things like that. So at this time, those are not used because, you know, we have beautiful supplies. So we had $110,000 in instructional supplies alone from Title I this year for, for GHS. So all of those needs are being met through, through the district at this point.
For just going to pick randomly, it says GHS library as a figure has been transferred to 712 CIS account. What if the library needs to buy something?
If the library needs to buy something, they will go to the principal, Mr. Hawkins, and he can take that out of that curriculum instruction and student account. But the library, for instance, um, what is comprised in that account is from years and years and years of overdue book fees that go into that generation of there or lost books or damaged books. Um, but we get about $4,000 a year from the state of Illinois for new book replacements. And so once again, if that isn't enough for our K-12 needs, then it could either come out of the curriculum instruction activity account or as I said, we have lots of title money that we're devoting towards curriculum that could also be purchased out of there. Lots of different options.
So what's the dollar figure then that's going to go to the 712 CIS account?
Well, it fluctuates, so I will get that for you. It literally fluctuates on a daily basis. So, um, this was a point in time on 3/8/22. So we're literally in some accounts depositing still on a regular basis. So I will get you that final figure. We'll cut it off at a point in time.
I'll take questions. Can you give us an example of that account that is still moving and why we're closing it?
Um, for instance, like vocal music.
Okay.
So they may have, um, like, uh, damaged uniform fees or money for damaged music. Like that would be something that would go back into their accounts.
Okay.
And that's going to, vocal music, for instance, and most of that came from, my understanding, from the old magical base. Where they would make money from the magical. Uh, so all of those funds are actually going to go into a Q account because they need to purchase their robes and things again. So that's one of them that would not go into CIS, but would go into a Q account if they move a band. I'd like to hear some, oh, I'm sorry.
So we have CIS and we have CSI.
We do.
So explain the difference.
CSI is the program that repairs the Chromebooks. It's the class. And so those are the fees that were generated from the repair of those Chromebooks. So students are charged a deductible, either 25, 50 or $75 deductible if it's not a, a manufacturing issue. And so those revenues went back into the CSI account. Those really need to go back into the tech on 20 account because the tech department purchases all of, um, the equipment, all of the supplies for the repair of the Chromebooks. So whatever revenue is generated from the repair of those Chromebooks really needs to go back to the tech supply line item to refund those. We spend about $40,000 a year on equipment, um, like motherboards, new screens, things of that nature.
Is this going to slow down, slow down purchases for or eliminate the possibility of purchases through some of the programs?
A lot of these accounts are, are dormant. Um, like for instance, uh, one that Mr. Matthews and I were talking about the other day, the GHS varsity G club. Um, nobody can quite even remember when varsity G was a club in recent years. I know I've heard stories, you know, back in the day where they would actually do activities and go skiing and.
Long time ago.
But that hasn't been something that has actually been used for a number of years. So, um, all of these have, have been dormant, have had activity for some time.
But I do see some of them that certainly have activities, so.
So correct.
For example, you know, like the GHS musical.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay.
So we are making a significant change with the fall play, the musical and the junior high play as well.
Right.
So we wanted to make sure that our students could go to any theater production without being charged. They were being charged $12.
Part of our registration, because we want.
Correct.
We want people to participate.
Correct, and we want to support theater. So, um, I met with Mr. Rasso, who is the director for the spring musical. He's also acting as a mentor and producer role for some of our younger directors in the district. And moving forward, um, all of our students will be able to attend for free. We're going to reduce those prices, so it would cost you the same to go to a musical as it would to go to a basketball game. There'll be senior pricing. Um, and the district will put all of their current funds into a Q account. And then once that money is exhausted over the years, then the district will refund and replenish that Q account, so.
So, so they don't have to worry about not having enough money to do.
Correct. And the directors will sit down with me. In fact, we have a meeting in April. So the three directors for the, uh, fall high school play, the junior high play, and then the musical are going to present budgets. We're going to talk about the budgets, look at that. Um, the majority of the costs are actually with the licensing of the plays and the musicals. Um, and we're going to set our budget for next year and then we'll be moving forward with, with this plan. So I'm really excited because our students will get to go to our plays and, and musicals for free.
In a, in a brand new performing center.
Absolutely. And this was an initiative of Member Lions, so I appreciate him wanting to really promote our, our arts. And we want every one of our 621 seats filled at each of those performances.
Is that the member, Brian?
Yes. 623.
Oh, well, that's a seat for Dr. Asmo and I. We've got one reserved.
Well, thank you. Now I'll move on to, I need a motion to approve the disposal of GABC.
Second.
Okay. Is there anything to discuss about this?
Evergreen, is, is this, is this equipment, uh, broke? Update, what are we doing and why do we have to have a disposal agreement?
Well, because that might, those, that equipment was purchased with tax dollars way back in the day. Sorry. So we replaced the tire balancer, tire changer. It was one of those pieces of equipment. We brought over to the new center. I have since replaced that. And so we have to do a request for disposal of that equipment. And the second one would be, uh, we have a parts washer. We already had another parts washer. We don't have, need to have two of them. And takes up some wall space that we needed for the new tire machine.
And this is because they were purchased with your federal grant funds, Perkins funds?
Yeah.
So they're not saleable assets?
You know, that's something we probably need to discuss. They might be assets that we could resell, like on Marketplace. But I'm going on to talk a little bit about, you know, the precautions that we need to take for where to sell that. That is a working piece of equipment that we should allow these to take a third or fourth. So that.
We also need to get written permission because it is, you can't, once something is purchased, then you can't profit above and beyond the purchase price in essence. So you have to get special permissions with federal grants if you're going to then resell it. Um, so we just need to make sure that through Illinois State Board of Education that we get those approvals if we're going to sell them. We can donate them, we can dispose of them, we can recycle them. But when you're reselling it, then it's, if you don't have, yeah, permission, it can be considered as double to me.
Allison?
Phelps.
I.
Everidge.
I.
Sherpy.
I.
Bestham.
I.
Samantha.
I.
Ryan.
Now we're getting close to the, Lauren, do you need a break? Okay. Any motion that can, Lauren Personnel, motion to consider approval of resolution reference dismissal of professional educator licensed employee P E L, Lauren Tuket. Familiar with this? Anybody have any questions? Allison?
Everidge.
I.
Sherpy.
I.
Samantha.
I.
Bestham.
I.
Ryan.
Yes.
Phelps.
I.
Okay. And another motion to consider approval of resolution reference dismissal of professional educator licensed employee P E L, Peter Tuket.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Allison?
Sherpy.
I.
Bestham.
I.
Samantha.
I.
Ryan.
Yes.
Phelps.
I.
Everidge.
I.
Okay. Need a motion to consider approval of unpaid suspension for Deborah Greenleaf.
So moved.
Second.
Any, uh, questions or comments? Allison?
Bestham.
I.
Samantha.
I.
Ryan.
Yes.
Phelps.
I.
Everidge.
I.
Sherpy.
I.
Any motion to consider approval of the employee seniority list?
So, second.
Everybody's received the seniority list?
Why do we do this? Straight forward by law, fourth parallel, P E R A, not just M E R A.
Also, it's important for people to see it, to maybe mistake, may have the opportunity to correct it. It affects their property rights to a job and a place in a job.
Look, our SEIU union, they actually did this on police, so we require you to send, send your rest of the.
Allison?
Samantha.
I.
Ryan.
Yes.
Phelps.
I.
Everidge.
I.
Sherpy.
I.
Bestham.
I.
Okay. Any motion to consider approval of the personnel report?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Allison?
Samantha.
I.
Ryan.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Everidge.
I.
Sherpy.
I.
Bestham.
I.
And almost done, um, agreements update. The same, you have any with this?
I have no knowledge of new agreements at this time.
Okay. Next is a report of FOIA requests.
We only had one at this point. Illinois Retired Teachers Association always asks for a yearly list of retirees and that's been provided to them.
Excellent. And wrapping things up with comments by the Board of Education. I'll start with my left with, remember Phelps?
I, I want to thank everybody that, over the, it's been two years now on the, uh, new schedule. Um, I also applaud everyone that spoke up and gave positives and negatives of the timing on starting schools. I'll, I'll be the first to admit, I don't know what's, you know, without hearing that kind of stuff. So I, I hope everybody feels the, where the timing landed was a good, I feel was a good compromise to allow us to get everybody to do what they want to do in their day. And, and I hope, uh, some of the feedback I got on having children in different buildings, how am I going to get them everywhere? I think this schedule allows all that to happen. The other thing, all the time that Dr. Springer and everybody else that went into this, did, anytime, none of us like change. Um, but we're trying to do the change that helps at the end of the day, the, the education of our students, uh, the extracurricular. It was great to see the, the, some of the winter athletes and the individual sports, you know? Um, sometimes they get overshadowed, but great, great response there. That's all I have. I, I do want to have, I do have a couple of future agenda items. We'll wait on that. Thanks.
Number five?
Nothing today.
There aren't no comments. We sit here every time.
I have a few. Um, and forgive me if I get teary eyed. So during the presentations, I just want to, I want to acknowledge a few things. Coach Leibach has done a tremendous job with our wrestling program. Um, and I told you I was going to get teary eyed. I am sad that my son didn't have more time with him when he was a wrestler. Um, but I want to, I want to acknowledge that Gage, one of the wrestlers, um, has set that state goal. When we talk about goals and Mr. Sharp was talking about Chloe and, and, and what, you know, Chloe's mind was set to. Gage is that type of young man too. And, and he's been working toward that state appearance since he was a young man. And he puts in time all year. Um, and to just, you know, shout out to Rocky, he's had, um, some examples in his life because he had an older brother make it out of sectionals and into state and didn't place at state. Um, but, uh, Mr. Leibach has been doing wonderful things with that program. And, um, so I just, and, and to hear, it, it, you know, it's a crappy name, but that blood round. And, you know, I've been there with my son. And to know the hard work that you have to lean on. Because it is an individual sport. And you have to put all of your, you know, your anxiousness and, and you've got to put everything out there uh, because that's your, that's your last opportunity. And so to know that they're sophomores and I'm just excited to see what they're going to do. And to Chloe, I have to say something because it's like, I feel like this is our last time together. Those records that Chloe broke stood for 25 years. And bowling is not, you know, a renowned sport. Those records that Chloe broke stood for twenty-five years, and bowling is not, you know, a renowned sport. Um, but for those of us who participate in it, it is something, it is something to be in an alley. In those tournaments, you're bowling hours, you're there for eight hours and you're bowling. Um, you notice a difference in the, your arm muscle from your throwing arm to your non-throwing arm? It looks kind of freaky during the season, but, um, I've been at that state tournament, I don't know if it still held a cherry up in Rockford, yep. Um, that, the, the tension that you have from that first day to the second day, um, I think I ta, I placed around twenty-sixth my year. Ni, um, Nicole Holland, I think, was the eleventh place, um, that Chloe beat, but, um, I had some very special times when I was a bowler. Um, I still have my pin, I got a, a bowling pin and everybody signed it, I don't know if they still do that, Chloe, but if they don't, okay. Um, so congratulations, I didn't bowl division, but I did bowl a couple of years in college myself, and you'll have some more exciting times there, so congratulations. Um, and then I also just want to acknowledge one thing in the personnel agenda. Coach Kisa Henry has decided to hang her hat up. And she has coached the dance team for sixteen years, and she has done a tremendous job with the cadets. And she went out with a lot, you know, she didn't go out with a lot of pomp and circumstance because my sister isn't that way. Um, but I wish the next coach, whoever that is, some good luck. It'll be really, really different watching the cadets perform in the future, knowing that my sister isn't the one out there counting five, six, seven. A comment after that.
What do you get like that?
So, um, a couple of things, I'm gonna echo a couple of, uh, my fellow members. One, I am absolutely super excited to have met, um, our state competitors. I, if you follow me, I do share, um, the information of our state competitors, so it was nice to finally meet you, Chloe, and, um, Gage, and all the other fine gentlemen over here, and it was great, it was quite a few, and there was a few that I didn't even know them personally, but definitely shared the information, so it was really exciting for me to meet you guys. Um, outside of that, um, I definitely also appreciated the feedback, the concern of start times, end times, and, you know, again, you know, addressing those things, and last meeting also, you know, what that looks like for athletes, classes, you know, all things that we definitely took into consideration, you know, I'm not just a board member, I also have two students that will be in this district, two different building as well, so, you know, all those things were important to me as a parent and board member, so, um, with that being said, thank you for everything you do, everyone who's working here in the district, keep doing what you're doing, and have a great night.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm not gonna have any comments, uh, does anybody have any future agenda ideas?
Yes, um, so we just heard Mr. Matthews, we asked about restrooms. Since we're on that high school campus and we're not done, I would like to have, Brian, we're giving you more work. Um, look at what it would take to put restrooms in that, in that tennis court area, why we're, why we're on that campus. I mean, now's the time to, to do that kind of stuff. I also would like to, um, our, we just had, we just have state wrestlers, what are we gonna do with our wrestlers? Um, you know, what, what are we, what are we doing there for those folks? Um, looking at, um, the whole campus of, you know, the Gale situation, all, you know, what, how can we have a schematic of what, what our end goal is there at the, at that seven-twelve campus? Um, now's the time to, now's the time to do that kind of stuff, I feel, at least have a vision and a plan for the next year or two of what we're gonna do.
Thank you. Lori?
Well, I'm glad we got the presentation on the solar projects, I'd like, sometime have a, continue that, but as, but I'd like to have a report on our electric usage and how it's affected, what kind of gain we've had through our solar fields that are already in effect.
Okay, you can do that, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, uh, next, well, we're gonna have a special meeting, and, and time to be determined for the sale of meals. And, but, uh, regular next meeting will be Monday, April eleventh, at seven P M. And with that, adjourned. Need a motion?